It's time for Work Comp Talk. Coming to you from the Pacific Workers Studio in Concord, California. It's Work Comp Talk. Interesting people talking about the issues that affect the lives of the everyday people that keep our communities moving. Sponsored by Pacific Workers Compensation Law Center, the lawyers for injured workers. With offices in Concord and Oakland, Pacific Workers is the leader in California workers compensation, representing injured workers throughout Northern California. PacificWorkers.com, the lawyers for injured workers. Now to your hosts, Eric and Carmen.
Hi, and welcome back to Work Comp Talk. Joining us today is a very special guest, and as you guys know, this morning we released a previous episode with another similar guest, and we wanted to welcome you guys. Joining me today is my co-host, Eric Farber. Hello, Eric, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
I'm doing great, I'm very excited. And of course, our special guest today is Oakland City Council Rebecca Kaplan. Thank you for joining us, Rebecca.
Thank you so much for having me, it's a pleasure to talk with you.
Yeah, absolutely, we're really pretty excited about this. We had Derek Johnson on, and Rebecca, I want to talk, I mean, I think a lot of people know you because you're the current council president and you're council member at large, but you have quite the background, MIT, a master of arts from Tufts, and a law degree from Stanford. And you've been in Oakland for how long?
Yes, I've been living in Oakland for 25 years, and my history here is that I've worked as a housing rights attorney in Oakland, as a state assembly legislative aide for prior assembly member, and I served on the board of AC Transit prior to being elected to the Oakland City Council at-large seat, which means I represent the entire city of Oakland, and now, this term, I was elected as council president by my colleagues.
That's right, and where are you from originally?
So, I grew up in Toronto, Canada.
What?
Yes.
As did I.
I grew up in Toronto, Canada, and so, you know, if, we also can talk about universal health care and why that's important for society to have health care for all, I think in this moment of pandemic, maybe some people who felt that it wouldn't hurt them if other people didn't have health care, perhaps can see that when you have a communicable disease, that everyone is at risk if some people don't have access to care. But yes, I grew up in Toronto, Canada, land of polite people and universal health care. I did my undergraduate work at MIT in Cambridge, Massachusetts, and I also majored in activism as an undergraduate. I was involved in the Student Movement for Divestment from Apartheid Era South Africa, and worked to have my campus adopt a sexual orientation non-discrimination policy. And keep in mind, in the late 80s, there was no such thing as equal rights for LGBT people at the time, and it was legal to fire people, to deny people equal protections. So getting our university campus to adopt that was pretty important, and we also did successfully get the divestment from South Africa, which was part of a nationwide movement at the time.
Yeah, I do remember that. I actually grew up in Toronto as well.
Oh my God.
Yeah, so I was like, what? What? You guys probably were neighbors.
I don't know, it's funny because I, today I actually was on the phone with somebody with a company that wants to turn my book into an online course, and the company is based in Toronto, so I hadn't talked about it in a while, so. But, so, look, you've been in office for quite some time in Oakland, right? Before that AC Transit, was that based, was that a spot that was based in Oakland as well, I assume?
Yeah, so the AC Transit seat covers the entire Greater East Bay region, Fremont through Richmond, the whole area where you see AC Transit buses is part of that jurisdiction. And while I was on that board, I actually worked with people even beyond that geography because we launched the All-Nighter Bus System. This was one of my proposals, as you know, BART closes at night, a lot of people thought they should just stay open, but technically they actually can't because they have to do track maintenance because they're not double-tracked like some other cities' systems. And so, while I was at AC Transit, I put together a collaborative of the different transit agencies in partnership with the regional funders to create an all-night bus system, so if you missed that last BART train, now there's buses, most of them run by AC Transit, that cover the BART route while BART is closed. So that was one example of a collaborative effort through that transit seat that then really helps people to get around.
Well, now there's also Uber Pool.
Well, you know, I was actually one of those teenagers, we actually ended up going to Great America once, and we got stuck out there very late. BART stopped working, and we were like, how in the world are we gonna get back home without telling our parents how far we are? So, thank God for AC Transit, we were able to actually come back home, it took a little bit longer, but it was definitely available, and the option was there, so, yes, that was good.
We also launched zero emission hydrogen fuel cell buses, that was one of the projects I worked on, and bike racks on all the buses. So I am also a bicyclist myself, and so now all the AC Transit buses have bike racks on front, so if you need to get somewhere on your bike, either it breaks down or it's just too far or hard of a ride, you can put your bike on the AC Transit bus as a way to connect that ride.
Well, it's interesting, where our office, we used to be in Jack London Square, we, Civic Workers Offices moved to Hagenberger, one of the larger buildings, I think they call it the Landing now, it's had a bunch of different names, they keep trying to name it. And when we moved in, there were no bike racks, and so I made it, I was able to negotiate a bike rack for all the tenants in there because I knew that several of our people would actually ride their bikes, but after a few were stolen, they just took them to the office anyway. So nobody, nobody actually left them in the bike racks. So why did you decide to run for office again?
So, some of the particular things that I'm working on that I think are really important in terms of protecting the health of the community. One of the things that people may know is that there is a heavy over-concentration of air pollution in parts of Oakland, particularly in West Oakland around the port and through East Oakland along the 880 corridor, where we see dramatically worse air pollution than the rest of the region, and that is associated with higher asthma rates, other negative health indicators, there's a huge racial disparity to that impact in terms of where the pollution is concentrated, and it really significantly harms people's lives. So some of the steps that I've won so far on this include convincing the Bay Area Air Quality Management District, which is the board that oversees a lot of air quality policy and funding, to designate those hard-hit areas of Oakland as a priority for funding implementation. We've gotten funding for cleaner engines for the locomotives and for the port cranes, and I'm now working with a coalition of stakeholders to bring zero emission trucks to that area. Hydrogen fuel cell zero emission trucks, diesel particulate matter is a huge source of the health-impacting pollution that is hurting people in our community, so that is one specific example of a pending project that I'm committed to fighting to bring forward. And in another topic, one of the things that we fought for this year was funding to launch mental health responders for mental health calls. You may have seen some debate about, you know, what things should police do and what things should we not rely on police to do. And one of the challenges in the United States and in California since the cuts to mental health is that when somebody is having a mental health challenge, what tends to happen is what, who gets sent is a police officer with a gun, and not necessarily with mental health training. And those situations often go very badly, sometimes people end up getting shot and killed, and sending someone who doesn't have mental health training to a mental health situation isn't serving anybody, it's costing the.
Let me ask you, let me ask you, the opposite of that is, you know, obviously, the, you know, it's run through very quickly, the defund the police, which I think hasn't really been the best messaging, you know, for what we're actually talking about. It's very interesting, I happen to be taking a look at the platform of the current Libertarian Party, right? And so many people in the Libertarian, so many people these days will say they're really Libertarian, but they vote, you know, they vote another party, and most of those are, you know, they'll vote as the Republican Party. However, it's interesting because Libertarians basically go with the exact same thing as our, as the, what is now known as defund the police, which is reserve police for violent crime, right? And, but, the other side of that is, is why don't we do more training for our police officers for the types of calls that they actually have to do?
Well, so the point about the Libertarian Party, I think is really interesting because one of the laws we worked on in Oakland was to end criminalization for marijuana use, and that is something that I worked on, that we passed in Oakland, and that everybody from the Green Party to the Libertarian Party to the, now the Democratic Party have come on board with supporting, and I think people come at that from different places, right? For some people, that's important because they're concerned about police overreach and police misconduct, for some people, it's important to them as a fiscal responsibility issue, right? They see the bill.
Sure.
Based on prisons and prosecutions for something that doesn't harm anyone, right? And so, I think people might come at it from different angles, but I think the point about how are we making sure that we're serving the community effectively? And so, in Oakland, we didn't just say, don't send a police officer to mental health, we actually said something proactive, who do we send? And one of the proposals that I successfully got in the budget last year was to do the initial study to create a civilian response model for mental health calls, and now that study has been completed, the program is now titled MACRO, it will provide trained civilian responders for mental health calls, and that program being launched is now funded in the Oakland budget. So we're not just saying what not to do, we are also talking about what would be effective, and it costs less money, right? So for some people, they're looking at it from the, from the perspective of the human impact, and for other people, they might look at it from a fiscal perspective, but we can achieve both goals, we can have better human impacts and we can save money. So that is one of the programs that we have put forward. There's also two other measures on the November ballot that I co-authored, that I would love to be a part of moving forward and implementing. One of them is to allow young people to vote in school board elections. The Oakland Youth Vote Ballot Measure, which would allow 16 and 17-year-olds to vote in local school board elections, really has the potential to reinvigorate our democracy and encourage civic participation, and recognize that the young people are so directly impacted by the school board decisions, that they should have a voice in that, and so that is on our November ballot. And we also have the Police Commission Ballot Measure, which will provide independent oversight in relation to misconduct cases, so that the decision about whether or not there was wrongdoing will be looked at by people who are independent from the chain of command of those who are alleged to have wrongdoing, so that you can have a system of trust and accountability. So those are two of our other items that are working on going forward.
Nice, I was gonna ask you about the MACRO, something that I had recently learned on another interview that you were on. So, it seems that so many of the candidates here in Northern California have similar ideas as you, the ideologies, what separates you now from the rest of them, besides the fact that you've been in the seat for X amount of years?
Some of the things that I think I bring particularly here is the ability to effectively navigate and win the votes on some of these very complex issues. So, for example, in terms of the Police Commission Ballot Measure, as you may know if you were following this, right, this is an issue that a lot of people have a lot of feelings about, there's a lot of strong opinions, it's one that can get very fraught as a topic, and yet, we successfully worked, myself as the lead author of this legislation, to work with all the stakeholders, to have those conversations, to have even the difficult conversations, and then successfully bring this forward through the council with a unanimous vote of the city council to put this forward onto the ballot. So that kind of effectiveness in navigating, even, even when it is choppy, to be able to successfully bring that forward and even with unity. The other thing I would say that I bring is an effectiveness in bringing tangible results in the real world in terms of knowing how to work with various partners. So for example, when you talk about working in Jack London Square, one of the transportation challenges that has happened here is that there was no connection from the BART to Jack London Square, we had these vital areas disconnected from each other, and so I brought people together to create a free transit shuttle that connects Jack London Square, Old Oakland, downtown, uptown, it's free to ride, it runs frequently, it's a multi-agency partnership with Oakland and AC Transit in our business improvement districts to bring that forward. And that was not just, you know, a legislative proposal, that's a tangible outcome that you can see on the street, that people are riding and using, similarly with the cleaner engines for the locomotives and the port cranes. So, you know, making sure both that we're fighting for the right values, right? Like environmental justice is a value I hold, but also really making sure we're delivering tangible results so that people can actually get around easier, that we're improving pedestrian safety, that we're improving access to jobs, and things like transit access and bicycle access.
So, we are, we're a podcast about jobs, right? About work, work comp, and that's, that's very near and dear, I study it a lot, trying to understand where it's going, what are the industries, especially about healthcare, healthcare ed.
Yep.
You know, we are a city of a lot of challenges. We have some very, very wealthy areas of Oakland, but we also have some very disenfranchised areas. Tell us, especially now, right, and I'm kind of skipping forward a little bit, but tell us what the plan is to create good middle-class type jobs in a time in America where middle-class jobs are disappearing. You know, what is, what is the plan of Oakland's leadership? What is your plan to help bring those disenfranchised communities online, you know, for good middle-class jobs, so people don't have to work three jobs to, you know, pay some, you know, pay exorbitant rent?
Absolutely, and that requires being willing and knowledgeable enough to target particular sectors and to fight to make sure that Oakland residents get access to those jobs, because making sure that we have quality jobs that uplifts Oakland residents has two components to it. We have to make sure that we have the quality jobs, and we have to make sure that they are accessible to Oakland residents. And so, part of that has included fighting for job training programs, working to expand the Cypress Mandela Training Program, and the Rising Sun Training Program, and others. Those, for example, are in the construction industry, the construction industry is one that does create a pathway to good-paying careers. However, historically, Oaklanders have been left behind there, and so we have worked successfully to win funding and create programs that provide that sort of job training, pre-apprenticeship and apprenticeship programs for Oakland residents so that they can get in to those quality careers in fields like construction, logistics, those types of areas. Then another example, healthcare, an incredibly important sector, both because it really can provide a pathway to a good-paying career, and because it is one where there is growing demand and growing need, right? So you don't want to do a massive job training to train people for jobs that then won't exist.
Well, absolutely. Health, yeah.
Healthcare is vital, and so one of the things that I have been working on in partnership is to bring a health education and nursing education school to the heart of downtown Oakland, and that that would be opened with programs to provide access for Oakland residents to get in as students, and then to have pathways to jobs, and to work with them to create a community clinic as part of their program, so that we're also providing access to health care services for area residents, and then the students can learn and get experience and work with the community, and then have pathways to those jobs as well. So that's another example of an area that I think is really important for our community.
So, I'm curious, if you weren't running for at-large, what district would you actually be in?
Yes, I live in Jack London Square.
Oh, you live in, okay. And who has that seat right now as in Jack London Square?
Three, Councilmember McLaughlin currently.
Okay, and if you weren't doing this, what do you think you'd do?
Well, I think that's always an interesting question to look at in terms of things I can tell you. What I have done besides this, which is I've worked as an attorney, doing cases for injured workers, doing cases around housing discrimination, protecting residents who suffer discrimination in housing, that was a lot of the legal work I've done. And I've also served a term on the Bay Area Air Quality Management District Board, creating policies and programs to reduce air pollution, to strengthen our response, and to bring in new technologies that can really improve the public health and clean the air. So those are some of the other things I've done. One other thing actually that might be interesting to know is that I grew up attending Orthodox Hebrew Bible School, and I teach Bible classes on the side, not paid currently because, you know, doing my exclusive job, but that's something else that's part of my life and something that I also do on occasion. And I think particularly, you know, as people talk about the really tough times we're going through right now, I do think that it's helpful to remember that people have been through really hard times before as well, and to uplift, you know, what does it mean to stay committed to our values and to communities in those times?
No question, you know, I'm, I'm a big fan of Stoic philosophy, and, you know, if there's one thing that we have to remember is, is there's very little in history that we haven't seen before, and it's, I've been reading several articles about almost identical things that our society is going through. Did you know there was an anti-mask society of San Francisco in 1918?
Yes.
But we've, you know, the world has seen pandemics and plagues since, since time before him. We have seen, we have seen terrible tragedies and wars, and I think when people are in it and this close to it, it's, it becomes more difficult. David Brooks in The New York Times at the beginning of this was talking about how the pandemic of 1918 is not something that is really talked about a lot in American history, like so many other events, World War II, World War I, you know, the building of the railroads, the Civil War, and he said, "The reason is, is because of just how badly we all treated each other." And it's something that we probably want to forget, and he said this at the beginning of this, in March, and he said, "Maybe this time we'll do a little bit better," and I'm not sure we have, right?
Well, one of the things that I grew up being taught in Hebrew Bible School is that we have an affirmative obligation to remember the past, that that's not something that's just gonna happen by itself, and that's why, you know, every year we retell the story of the Exodus from Egypt over and over again, right? That, that we have to keep reminding ourselves because otherwise we do forget. And, you know, in the, in the 80s and 90s, one of the other projects I worked on was HIV prevention education, you know, peer outreach, I mean, I wasn't working as a medical person, I was working as a community outreach, talking to people about preventing the spread of HIV and AIDS. And there's some aspect to what's going on now with the masks that is also kind of reminiscent of that, that there was a whole political core that was not willing to say that people should use condoms, even when the science was clear that that would save lives. And, you know, and there's something kind of similar to the energy now of the people who are like, "No, you can't say people should wear masks," you know, even once the science clearly has shown that that would save lives.
Well, I think it was messaged very badly for Americans. We should not have said, "This will save your neighbor," we should have said, "This will save yourself."
Because Americans don't care about saving their, for that to be a motivation.
Right, that's not the motivation, it saved me.
That's a key thing to say, is it'll hurt your neighbor.
So, but it's interesting, I mean, it only took 25 years for, for, you know, 75% adoption of seatbelts, right? It was a very long time, you know, but I, I personally have this issue that it's, you know, this personal freedom thing, because it's just the easiest thing to prevent the spread, right? I kind of, everybody, you know, worries about, sure, you should wash your hands, I'm not gonna say you shouldn't wash your hands, but at the end of the day, this is just about wearing masks, this is just a respiratory, you know, transport, make sure, you know, that's sort of it.
And, and let me restate that for anybody out there listening from that's not clear, it is incredibly important to wear a mask, wearing a mask is the top preventer. Yes, you should also wash your hands, but wearing a mask is the number one thing, oh, and by the way, it has to cover your nose, like this, under their nose, the mask has to cover your nose and your mouth, and it is incredibly important, and actually, wearing a mask does both reduce the likelihood that you would catch it and reduce the likelihood that you would spread it, they're both true, so maybe some people need one message more than the other, but wearing a mask will reduce your risk of catching it and your risk of spreading it.
But I really kind of wonder, and I was thinking about this this morning, if they put in a draft again, would these people say that they're not going because it's their personal freedom?
Well, if you think about what we've put up with in terms of how we've changed air travel, right? One person, one time, one shoe, one shoe, once, right? Everybody must take off their shoes all the time, every time, right? And whether or not it's effective, but everybody has been taking off their shoes, right?
Well, in fact, it's.
Are you gonna show us your?
Kind of, here's the thing is, is, people need to know I wear three types of shoes, right? And, and, and since this lockdown, I have worn golf shoes, right, because I golf, and these flip-flops, okay? They make me take these off.
At the airport?
At the airport. I wear them 90% of the time, very absolutely, I'll tell everybody, I'm very upset because they're about to break down, they don't make this kind anymore, and, you know, I've been wearing them for 10 years, it's very, you know, I have to go to eBay, right?
Find your, your flip-flops.
Find the flip-flops that actually are really good.
But it's really important, and in terms of our role, you know, as public leaders, it is essential that people wear masks, it is essential that workers be provided the right protective equipment, the right layout and distancing to be safe, right? And that's been a real challenge, a lot of the spread of COVID right now is among workers who have been deemed essential and called in, in some cases, to workplaces in very tight quarters, so I think that when we're talking about, you know, what more needs to be done to help remedy the current crisis, I think that's really important as well.
So.
What do you think Oakland needs to be able to open again after this pandemic?
Well, well, first of all, I think it's important for people to know that the decisions about what can and can't open and close are not under the authority of cities. These orders are coming from the public health departments of the counties generally, and sometimes from the state, but the overwhelming majority of the closure and reopener orders are coming from county public health departments, so here in Oakland, that means we're under Alameda County Public Health, and so that is part of why people have been so confused about what is and isn't required, right? Each county in California has had different rules, people are used to thinking of city governments as where you go for local rules, but these rules have been put under the authority of county health because they're health-related, so that is also one of the issues that we'll have to deal with. But in terms of what is necessary at the local level, I think we're going to need to continue to look at ways that we use alternative methods to provide goods and services. And so, one of the things I fought for and won in this recent budget fight was funding for our chambers of commerce, for our small business associations, to be able to support local businesses in making those modifications, so in some cases, that might be, you know, getting connected to a delivery option, in some cases, it's a physical layout change they have to make to their space, or installing other devices, so that was one of the things we started fighting to fund right away so that people can modify what they need to modify to function. I think one of the challenges has been the announcements coming in three-week chunks, right? "Oh, we're gonna all be shut down for three weeks," "Oh, three more weeks," three more, right? And so, there was not an initial putting out from the state level of what does a plan look like that's for a year? of what does a plan look like that's for a year to a year and a half, which would have been more realistic given what we know about these things, right? And so that means both looking at what happens after, but it also means right now that there need to be supports in terms of how do businesses do business differently? How do we enable them to? That might mean needing to realign streetscapes. That might mean connecting people to different online services, you know, depending on the type of business involved. In terms of the future, though, we need to be prepared to smooth the path to reopening. So one of the things I've been fighting for is how the city of Oakland handles permits and approvals to make that process smoother, so that we don't have bottlenecks there. We fought for and won funding for more staff who handle those permits and applications to be able to have expanded hours for those desks. So if somebody needs to rebuild, build differently, get a new permit, reopen or open a new business, that we smooth that path. So that's one sort of specific example at the local level that I think is really important and that we've been fighting for.
Well, I mean, there's got to be creative ways to get open for the businesses that are hurting the most. In our business, we're an office, we're a law firm, Pacific Workers, and we are, we have some people who are still in the office, you know, we're processing mail. We have them on different floors in different offices. But hair salons, gyms, I mean, these people are dying. These people are, these are small businesses already on the edge because of, you know, exorbitant rents that have happened in Oakland, you know, the license fees, et cetera. And really, if you look at the way the, from a national level, the way the virus has permeated, we're sort of like in different cars headed towards a cliff at different times. And each car has different wheels and different brakes and different, you know, and different engines, et cetera. And it's the same thing here in California. If you're in Los Angeles, you're speeding towards the cliff at a much different rate than Oakland is, or Orange County, where people don't want to wear masks, or San Diego, or out in Yuba City. You know, everybody's different. And so I get that it's, you know, it's Alameda, but even within these areas, it's all, it's all microcosms, right? It's just like the weather in San Francisco is very different than the weather in, you know, East Oakland, right? Even though they're only 20 miles.
Very much so. I mean, that's why Fruitvale was called Fruitvale, because you could grow fruit there, types of fruit that require hot weather, that you don't even find in North Oakland, that
That's right. You know, where I live, it used to be lots of fog, right? And you could grow roses. We're one of this little tiny strip, two in the country. Doesn't happen anymore because of the weather changes. But really, like, we should be able to get creative. And I know it might be on the county level, but you're Rebecca Kaplan.
Yes, and I am not waiting for the county level. And that's part of why in Oakland, we have already introduced the funding program for our small businesses. We have already introduced installing free public Wi-Fi in communities of concern because having internet access now is essential, right? So that is something we've been fighting for. That has already passed the council. We've already voted and funded the free public Wi-Fi, the Small Business Outreach Program. We have put forward a proposal that is being worked on to lower the tax rates on our smaller businesses to help them, as well as the funding for the expanded hours at the permit desk. But that doesn't mean that we should stop there. And when we talk about the micro situations, right? We have some grocery stores where there are workers having outbreaks. There are problems, you know, that are sector-specific to where there are problems. One thing that is not Oakland-specific, but just a national problem is that there are huge outbreaks in prisons and in elder care facilities, right? And that's not an Oakland
I mean, that is actually the vast majority of the illness, it's in the 40%, unfortunately. I mean, my mother, who is 80 years old, 81 tomorrow, or 82 tomorrow, excuse me, is in one of two facilities in all of Arizona that has not had the virus.
Oh, wow. Well, let's leave it on that. And so, talking back, going back to my point about tangible, specific things, that's why it's so important, one of the other pieces of legislation that I have fought for that made it easier to put in ADUs, accessory dwelling units, also known as in-law apartments, right? One of the easiest and most cost-effective ways to add more housing that would, in many cases, allow people then to age in place or in home, you know, either because someone could have their relative live in the in-law, or sometimes that would be a care attendant that could live there, so somebody could stay in their home, right? Making it easier to have an accessory unit, have it be legally allowable so people don't have to worry about that being underground, and making it cheaper and faster to put those in by removing some of the old onerous requirements that were put on people for doing that. Now, people might think, "Well, what does putting in an ADU have to do with COVID?" But it does, because that's a form of housing that is separable, that allows for shelter in place, doesn't require people to live in, you know, congregate facilities with a lot of people. So that's one example of something
Well, I'm going to ask you, I want to ask you about that, Rebecca. I want to ask you about that, because I did read a little bit about it. I am, I've certainly been back and forth on Airbnb. I had a horrible experience with Airbnb for over two and a half, for three years, with the people that literally lived across the street from me decided that they were going to Airbnb their house out and go, just go travel around. And originally, it was 30 days. You had to be at least 30 days, and it was reduced to seven. And boy, oh, boy, I will tell you, I don't think I'll ever stay in an Airbnb again. It caused unbelievable chaos on our street. And when I read about the additional dwelling units that you can actually build in your house, I thought, "We've got enough parking problems on our street," right? And so I wanted, I'm throwing out a little bit of a challenge to this because, you know, we, people work really hard to buy a house in a place like Oakland. And then is this just adding so you can have family there? Or is every house on the street going to get tenants in the backyard?
I'm so glad you asked that and brought up your fear of the bad Airbnb that becomes a loud, messy party house, because
It is far worse than that.
And beyond. I mean, we get those complaints and beyond because it would give me an opportunity to share that in our ADU law, we do not allow that. It is a minimum of 30 days. So it's not required to be a relative, but it is required to be terms of not less than 30 days. So you cannot do it as a short-term Airbnb. And, you know, we did talk to people about that, very concerned that you mentioned, that, you know, you're going to have, at minimum, a disruptive party, and at worst, something much worse than that, in every backyard. And so, you know, as we were crafting this, we did, in fact, not allow that. So that
I'm kind of asking, does this turn the possibility of every backyard into, you know, a multi-dwelling unit? Because it just seems, to me, there's a reason why hotels are put where they are, because there's zoning requirements, right? And this, and allowing people to have extra units seems that, seems that it would be against the original zoning of a residential neighborhood.
Oh, it still has to comply with the zoning. Our point is, and it still has to be within legally allowable. There's still the size limits and all that. The problem was, in the past, people would try to put one in, and they'd be given a runaround. They'd be sent to five different departments who gave them five different answers. They'd be given so many thousands of dollars of fees on putting it in, they couldn't put it in. So you still can't put in what's not legally allowable, but it creates a clearer and a smoother path. And no, they're not allowed to become hotels. So we did deal with that.
That's good.
We've also been fighting for something that might seem small but can have a big impact, which is public bathrooms and handwashing stations. And I don't mean the porta-potties, right? Because those can get pretty gross pretty quickly. But actual plumbed-in public bathrooms that are made from material that are designed to not be breakable. And if you want to take a virtual tour, they did these in Portland. They're called the Portland Loo, spelled L-O-O, Portland Loo, as in toilet. And they designed a public toilet that is all stainless steel, that is open air around the feet and open air around the top, so you can't have hanky panky in them. And that can be hosed down, so they're easy to maintain, and they're designed not to have breakable parts. And then they have a handwashing sink on the exterior of it, so you don't even have to step inside to just wash your hands. That's one of the things that was in my proposal that I brought forward to the city council, and the city council approved it. Now we're working to make sure that those get installed and implemented. And I raise that because sometimes when we talk about the challenges that societies face, we can forget about how those tangible logistical things impact them. And many of the large empires in history fell apart when they had diseases that were born by, you know, not having adequate plumbing, right? Not having safe ways for people to go to the bathroom. And so, you know, making sure that we're not risking the spread of disease through lack of sanitation is actually really important. So when people talk about, like, what are you fighting for in Oakland? And I talk about, like, mental health responders for mental health, you know, and clean air and local job access, you know, and sanitation too is really important. And if you don't have that, then a lot of disease spread and other problems can get a lot worse. So that's also one of the things that we're fighting for.
So while Carmen gets herself muted, I'm going to ask you.
Yes, are we having that, are we, we have to do the, who's muted now?
Sorry.
We are. It all happens, but, you know, the beauty of editing, right? But I'm going to ask you a couple of things, because this is important. And boy, is it important now. We have a vote coming up, and, you know, in November. What's the status of our polling stations? I have always voted by mail, just like the president. And what is going on with vote by mail? Is it any different than it was in the last election that we just, you know, filled out for primaries, et cetera? Do we have to worry, as Californians, as Oaklanders, as Northern Californians, as people in Northern California, about getting our ballots on time? And are there going to be drop-off stations?
I'm really glad you asked that. It is so important that we protect the right to vote. And it is true that the Republican administration in DC is actively working to sabotage the vote, including by actively working to sabotage the postal service. And I know, you know, he's now said he's not going to do any more sabotage, but first of all, we don't know if that's true. And second of all, what's already been done, including the taking away of the sorting machines from a lot of post offices, is really devastating. We are very fortunate here where we live, so I think to your question, there's two levels. One, how does it impact those of us who live here in Alameda County? And then there's also, how does it impact our nation as a whole? Because if we don't know who won the presidential election because of vote shenanigans in another state, that will hurt us, even if it isn't our state's votes that don't get properly counted. So first, let me talk about us on the local level. We do have the ability to bring our ballot to a ballot drop box. Here in California, every voter will be automatically sent a vote-by-mail ballot this year. So unlike other years, you don't have to request it or be on that list. Vote-by-mail ballots have been ordered to be sent to every Californian. That is supposed to happen at the beginning of October. Once you get your vote-by-mail ballot, and this is important on the local level, there are drop boxes in Alameda County. They are put out by the Alameda County Register of Voters. There is one right in front of the Alameda County Building at Oak and 12th Street.
And they're more around. That's pretty far for somebody who may be taking home with transit.
And in fact, what I'd like to do is give you the link to the information so that you can share that with folks. And I'm going to go ahead and
Well, we could do that offline, and we will make sure that we get it. It's the Alameda County Register's office?
Yes, has a link with all the information about where the drop boxes are. And then also, I'm going to switch back here. I have a page that I have put up on my own website that has that list of where the ballots are, where to register to vote. You can register to vote online in California. That is registeredtovote.ca.gov. And you can return your ballot at a drop box. Okay, I have just given you the link to the list of drop boxes. And so Alameda County has a whole bunch of drop boxes for ballots. They will be unwrapped and opened once the ballots go out, so you can't use them today to drop anything off. But that is a really important opportunity that we have here in Alameda County. And what I would really encourage people is vote early. Fill out your ballot early. Take it to one of the drop-off locations that is listed for Alameda County, if you live here in the county, because that will be really important. Now, I don't think there's much risk of shenanigans in California with the vote counting, but there is serious risk in other states where there are more hostile state officials to the vote counting. And so I do think it's important for those of us who care about this to also keep an eye on other places, because that could really impact the federal outcome. You know, that's part of why, for example, some of the work in Georgia that Stacey Abrams and others have been leading is so important, right? Even though we don't live there, if their votes don't get counted, that can impact the election outcomes. And similarly, in Florida, where there have been some attempts to basically reinstitute a poll tax in violation of the US Constitution. But in Alameda County, you should get your ballot in the mail, fill it out soon. Either mail it back very soon or take it to one of these ballot drop-off locations, which you all can then post that link for folks.
So this is a bad year to use Mayor Daley's old saying, "Vote early and often."
Oh, yes. Well, yes, I think this, you know, you'll get yourself rounded up by the Yeah, not the right year for that.
No, not the right year for that.
Well, there's a lot that you have definitely accomplished as the Oakland City Council. There's also a lot of challenges that you have faced. I just wanted to run it by, if someone wanted to get more information on Rebecca Kaplan, someone that hasn't learned enough of what's been going on and what's been accomplished, you know, we did talk a lot about what the accomplishments you've done and where you've headed as far as the Oakland City Council. Where can they visit to get more information about Rebecca Kaplan?
Yes, thank you so much. Yes, anybody listening who wants to learn more can visit our website, which is kaplanforoakland.org, all one word. K-A-P-L-A-N-F-O-R-O-A-K-L-A-N-D.org. That's kaplanforoakland. We'd be honored to have you reach out to us. Also, I'm incredibly honored and appreciative to have been endorsed by a wide range of leaders and community-based organizations, including the Sierra Club and the California Nurses Association, the Oakland Firefighters, the majority of the city council and community leaders. And for anybody listening, I'd be honored to have your vote. And thank you so much for having me on. It's been really a pleasure to talk with you.
So that's great. We're going to let Carmen take us out. Don't go anywhere, Rebecca. Stick on as Carmen takes us out. This is Eric, and thanks, thanks Rebecca.
So thank you, Rebecca, for joining us in this podcast. We were really happy to have you on board. In all fairness, of course, questions that were asked for Rebecca were also similar questions that were asked for Derek Johnson. Now you guys have two amazing candidates running for the seat for Oakland City Council. It's very important to get your vote in. And we also want to thank our sponsors, Pacific Workers, the Lawyers for Injured Workers, for making this podcast possible. If you are ever injured at work and you need legal help, you can definitely reach out to them at pacificworkers.com, Leaders in Northern California for Workers' Compensation. Rebecca, thank you so much for joining us. Make sure you guys visit us online as well. We are everywhere in social media, WorkcomTalk, or on your favorite platform to listen to podcasts, whether that's Google Play, Apple Podcasts, Spotify, wherever you like to listen to podcasts. Type in the words "WorkcomTalk," and you can definitely start downloading all of these episodes. Thank you, guys, for joining us. We'll catch you, guys, on the next episode.